Whatever.
Or fourth floor.
Ready?
We've got six o'clock, 12:00 meeting order, Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, roll call.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Isabel?
Here.
The President, Research, Ingle.
Here.
I have a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda, anything to remove? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Five zero. Special thanks to the Public Works staff for cleaning the snow out. I thought they did an admirable job. I liked what they did over the weekend was to put sand and salt on the intersections and corners of streets, so it worked out pretty good. Citizens request oral presentations, nothing. Committee reports. Gail, Personnel Admin Committee meeting.
We met on January 22nd. First item is the police union contract. We negotiated for three years at a time, so this will run through 2021. Initially, the union wanted an eight percent per year wage increase for each of the three years. Mayor was able to negotiate then a 10% increase for the first year and 3% for the next two years. He had also done some research and they took a look, he and Chrissy had taken a look as to what other cities our size in the state were paying and if we were in line with that. Also what other, the other communities are, because we have had officers leave because of additional pay. They had also asked for some additional holidays and vacation benefits, but negotiations stayed at the same to bring it in line with what the current city employees are currently receiving. So we made a motion and passed to recommend the negotiated union contract to the City Council, and that is on tonight's agenda. Talked about the council procedures. These hadn't been updated to, since 2008, and again, we needed to make a change in the policy on the absentee, the abstention and the absent voting policy, and so our recommendation is on the council agenda for tonight, too. And then we then talked about the Planning and Zoning Director positions, since Bob will officially be retiring in June, but he is, he will be finishing working as, in his position in the early part of March. We put an ad out and we received one application and also talked to another individual, but we didn't feel, did not feel that either of those candidates met our qualifications. So we're going to take some time, talk to Bob to see exactly what the needs are to position, how a person, what type of education we're looking at, what we're going to, to need, and so we'll continue on with this discussion. We then looked at the 2018-2019 budget and we recommended the budget to council, and then again, that is on tonight to set the public hearing for that, and the meeting adjourned at 5:30.
Hey, Gail, any questions for Gail?
I have one quick question. With the Planning and Zoning Administrator, have we looked at job sharing with other communities?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the thing is, is like, a lot of the towns like Laporte and stuff, they don't have a planning and zoning person.
But...
They have like a city administrator.
Do they want one?
I went out with an email to the majority of the communities around, and no interest and no candidates.
Okay. Just wondered.
I was hoping.
Yeah, we were.
I know we had talked about that with other positions, too, so.
We did.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else for Gail? Thank you. Now I have a public hearing regarding the amendment of Sections 165 and 166 of the Code Ordinance Hudson Iowa and 160, the 165 and 166 deal with a proposal to reduce its size from an R5 lot down from three acres to be one and a half acres, and then for, if that change is approved, that to continue to have large animals or other medium-sized animals, the lot would have to be at three acres. Reducing it down to one and a half reduces that allowable livestock. So open the public hearing. Chrissy, anything written?
No.
Any oral presentations by anyone?
Well, I came here to talk about it.
Okay.
If I may, I'd like to remain seated so I don't get all my papers on the floor.
Yeah.
Leon Nelson, 4441 Ranchero. As I look at this, there's just quite a number of things about it that look to me like they're not quite ready for primetime yet. You know, we don't have much representation here tonight from the R5 community, and I wonder, did R5 landowners get a notice?
I was going to ask the same question. Notifications would have gone to the individuals within 300 feet of the proposed spot, but it was more discussion at Planning and Zoning and Board of Adjustment. Wally Mokel's been involved with Board of Adjustment in the past as far as any special rulings, so it's not a specific request by an individual asking for a rezoning, but bringing up the overall topic to determine if this is the time. Wally's specific comments were, he believes it is the time to go ahead and do that. Back in 2003, when the ordinance was set, basic, had to have at least three acres for septic systems to work. Since that point in time, Blackhawk County, Waterloo, Cedar Falls, all allow down to one and a half acres from that perspective. So that was one of the primary ones. The other thing is, just from a standpoint of, as you're aware, water and sewer are available in certain areas. That was one of the restrictions. This would actually allow the one and a half acres to be brought up with water and sewer. Relative to the R5, I want you to remember, you currently, if we, if there had been notifications sent out to R5 landowners, you would not have gotten one, nor would you, Matt, because you're still A1.
Or A1.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know I didn't get one, but I was wondering if R5 people did.
No.
And you said it would have been 500 feet from a...
Well, if, for somebody requesting a rezoning, it had to be within 300 feet, but I forgot, this is not a, this is not part of a formal request for a rezoning. This is addressing the ordinance itself at the one and a half versus the three acres.
Well, it's not a formal request for rezoning. It essentially does do a rezoning and defining, redefining what R5 is.
That's correct. Really does redefine what an R5 with that special restriction.
I think this may come as quite a surprise to R5 landowners and those with land adjacent to R5, because there just hasn't been much published on it. I was looking at the, the meeting notice. Well, let me even back up beyond that. State code says that government bodies shall give notice of the time, date, and place of each meeting, including a reconvene meeting, or the governmental body and attentive agenda of the meeting, in a manner reasonably calculated to appraise the public of that information. Now, the meeting notice that was in the paper said that by amending provisions pertaining to Chapter 165 and 166. No mention was made of R5, no mention was made of bulk requirements. Pretty hard to decipher for the general public what 165 and 166 is.
As you're aware, they're all public on the website.
People will take the time to go dig it up.
If they have decided they should.
But just seeing those numbers, you know, just for example, I challenge anyone at the table to tell me what Chapter 122 is, or how about 76? You don't recognize them by number either.
Right, but if we saw those, we would need to go and look them up. That would be our job as, as council people or citizens, if we're curious to know what 165 and 166 is.
But there's nothing there to raise curiosity, is there? Nothing. So I think we did not a, not a real good job of averting the neighborhood impacted. That's what's going on. Another concern I have here is this really leaves undefined in my mind. I don't see any answer to what happens to the setback requirements for lots that are currently three acre R5.
It would stay at the lot requirement that's in the bulk requirements.
That they have now, and how do I know that? Where is that defined? As R5 changes to new requirements...
Within the bulk requirements, it's part of the ordinance.
But the ordinance changes.
Pardon?
The ordinance changes, but for the existing lots, it's, it's left open. It's undefined what's happening there. And I didn't find anything. Maybe your statement kind of covered that, as to what happens with the animal limitations for the newly defined one and a half acre R5s. Maybe that's the same as R1, I don't know.
It's the same as R1, because the only exception is on R5. You're allowed up to two large animals, I believe it's three medium animals and some other number. And specifically, within the ordinance changes for 165 and 166, and 166, it says these are only at three acres and above.
Right, right.
So...
But it doesn't address the acre and a half clearly.
It does. The acre and a half says you don't get to have the allowance of the animals that are allowed at a three acre lot in an R5. So you'd be in R1.
I don't recall reading that in there. Maybe it does, but I didn't see it. The stated reason at the Planning and Zoning hearing for this change was it was to reduce the number of variances that are being issued, and that may well be. There could be another approach, though, and is quit approving those variances. We've been pretty liberal with, with variances in our zoning.
And that's what Wally's had mentioned is, if it had come to Board of Adjustments, he feels that those would normally be approved, and he feels we should, you know, as you and as Jack mentioned previously, to try to get our ordinances in line with what's really realistic, so that the, any type of a request becomes minimal.
I have a little bit of feeling that we're getting a blanket request to change R5 and all R5. It's basically resulting of the request of, of one party. I may not be right on that, but that's kind of what I'm, I'm feeling.
I would respond to that, Leon, the fact that one or two parties came with a request, and then it was broadened into discussion in Planning, Zoning, and Board of Adjustment. And again, even if this ordinance is approved, both of the two ordinances are approved, for anybody to come under an R5 one and a half acre, that comes into the rezoning request, which then is the 300 feet and all the neighbors and so on. So it's not a case of a blanket, okay, all the land becomes R5 one and a half acres. The land sits exactly as it is, but now it would have an ordinance ability to come in at a one and a half acre scenario.
Another thing I read is in the zoning map, is that for a change of zoning to take place, the map has to be changed, and while this is still R5, but we've changed the definition of R5. In fact, right there on R5, it says what, large lot residential, and that's really not what it is anymore. So for this to take effect, we have to have a new map.
It's being updated by Intercom as we speak.
Yeah. In fact, we're, we're late in doing that for the Twin Oaks subdivision, too, aren't we?
That's why it's...
Yeah. But no dirt's been moved yet, so I suppose that'll work okay. My main concern is this just leaves no recourse for the protection of the very nature of the R5 or the three acre A1 lots. We can't protect that by code anymore if we do away with R5 as we know it. Now, all these criticisms wouldn't be very good if I didn't offer a solution, and I've got one. Let's leave R5 alone, as it is, and come up with a new zoning classification that defines the acre and a half lot with its own septic system. That would solve every one of those problems.
That result would be the same, wouldn't it, Leon? Or do you just think from the complexity of...
Well, we would still have R5 zoning that could be used to protect the nature of three acre neighborhoods. We would still have control of the setbacks in the current R5 lots. You could still put in a neighborhood with R5 three acre zoning. That could be done if we wanted to.
If that was done...
And we're boxed out of that.
Hypothetical question, if that was done, would you come in to have your lot rezoned R5?
At some time, I suppose it would be rezoned R5. I'm in hot, in any hurry to have it done. Wait and see what happens to the rest of the neighborhood, and then behind us, and so on. R5, A1, from our standpoint, are about the same, in fact, so. That was, that's my thinking on it. I believe that's a better solution than what we're attempting tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Eric Johnson, I'm an attorney at the Beach of Walther. And I think this all initiated from a couple of my clients, Stephen, Joanna Hack, wanting to possibly get a variance, and at that time, through talks with Bob Stevenson and then through Board of Adjustment, they felt with as many variances as were coming, that it made sense to get the zoning change. I agree, I think the zoning change makes sense. I think it brings it in conformance with many of the other local areas around here. I also think that the reason for the larger lots was driven by septic years ago, and that's not requirement. Given the fact that the frontage of each of these stays the same, that it still has to be that 150 foot wide, what you get a lot of times, I think, with those three acre lots, is really long lots that people aren't looking for yards to be that long in all instances. Certainly in some instances, it might make sense and it fits, but that's before you, before you rezon anything R5 to make that decision whether it fits with the neighborhood. But based upon what I heard at Planning and Zoning and what I've seen elsewhere in development, I think it makes sense for the R5 to go down to the 1.5 acres.
Anyone else?
I would just add to that, if it would stay where it's at, and let's say the Hacks just get a variance for that one, there's additional land to the west of the Hacks that will likely get developed, and then I can pretty much assure that there will be a variance asked for that as well. And then one thing that Mr. Johnson brought up at Planning and Zoning was that not only does it, if you would reduce it down to an acre and a half, a lot of the extra acre and a half is useless land, and that's just additional productive farmland that's taken out of production. So I think there, there's some value to not taking that additional land or twice as much land, you know? Of course, there are people that are going to want it and need it, but, you know, taking unnecessary farmland out of production.
Should I address that for a moment, all your time?
Sure. Go ahead, Leon.
I really wanted to take exception to that statement of Bob's at that Planning and Zoning meeting, but see, our format of meetings is that we get to provide input now, but you guys are going to have a discussion, and then we don't get to provide any input with what unfolds in that discussion. And that's what happened in Planning and Zoning. Bob made that comment, yes he did, about, you know, most of us don't use that land, the acre and a half behind the house anyhow. Well, pardon my French, but what business is it of his? If I want to drive my old tractor around that acre and a half on my lot, I can do it. If I want the kids to play baseball there when they come to visit, they can do it. I can use that acre and a half however I want. I bought it, I pay taxes on it, it's mine. I would have liked to have had a rebuttal with Bob at that point, but couldn't.
Couldn't you do the same thing, just in my own opinion, buy two lots, an acres and a half, and you can do whatever you want to with it?
Pardon?
Couldn't you just buy two lots and have, and do whatever you want to with it anyway? Does it have to be zoned to a three acre?
But you can't control that by zoning. You can control it by development or the individual buying them, but you can't control it by zoning.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I've got several questions and comments, but I'll save them to our discussion.
In case, I'll close the public hearing. General Government, the City Council maintains the right to waive the first and second readings when the ordinance is presented and may pass the third and final reading of the same ordinance within the same council meeting. Item A, discussion action to approve the first reading of Ordinance 791, an ordinance amending the Hudson City Code 2017, Chapter 165, Development Ordinance Definitions and General Provisions. And this is changing it to the one and a half acres on an R5, changing the setbacks on the charges. And I would only be willing to accept a motion for a first reading. I will not accept a motion to waive the first and second.
So moved. Second?
Discussion.
Three things, if I can remember them, because I didn't bring those. One is, I noticed in the packet that we cited Waterloo and Cedar Falls as having done this, and that's why we want to do that. How, I mean, we're next to Waterloo and Cedar Falls, but...
It wouldn't be the reason we want to do it, it's just as a point of information, they do allow it.
So what I'm trying to, to determine in my mind is whether Cedar Falls does that or not, and Waterloo, does that matter? And so if it doesn't matter, I would take it off my list of supporting reasons. And so my question is, where's Denver at? Where's Janesville at? Where's Laporte City at? What do these communities that are more like ours in nature, what do they do with this? And does anyone have that answer?
I don't have that answer.
Okay.
And I think, and I think that from the size perspective, back in 2003, whenever that 2000, the R5s was created, it was to allow formalization, instead of building a three to five acre A1 zone with those zoning changes, to put it into an R5, and the three acre limit at that time, I think was driven, as I understand it, driven by the fact that that was a requirement by Blackhawk County for septic systems for size, and that's the, a lot of the driving change between then and now. From a density standpoint, if you've got certain amount of frontage, you can go back forever. As you know, if an area was able to be developed without water and sewer, with maybe another street through with a bunch of one and a half acre lots, it may actually promote development. I don't know what the plans are out in that area, other than the two that were specified.
Cool.
And it would take, obviously, acre and a half does take less farm ground out of production, 23%.
Right. Um, the second question was, what's wrong, I've never, Lee and I haven't talked about this, so I, this is new to me, but what's wrong with that solution? What's wrong with coming up with...
Another, another zoning in R38 or an R1.5 that signifies residential one, but one and a half acre minimum? I don't necessarily have a problem with that, we just had never thought of that. It was thought, I think, probably the simplest way was to make these minor modifications, even though they can be conflicting, confusing. But if you're reading them, to just make those two modifications into the ordinances on the 165 and the 166. It wasn't looked at as, okay, we can stay away from creating another district, how about if we just make these modifications?
About the taking the farmland out of production thing, wouldn't, if I was going to buy a three acre lot, wouldn't I want three acres?
Oh, you're going to buy, yeah.
Wouldn't, I wouldn't care about the acre and a half that's being taken out of production because I would want that acre and a half.
Sure.
For whatever I wanted. So again, I, I don't know if that's a great argument to defend it. Okay, the whole deal of 165 and 166 in the meeting notice, I don't mean it to be a red herring, but it does, like, sometimes I wonder when I hear stuff like that, is, are we doing this on purpose? Are we, are we being unclear on purpose so that we get less public stirred up, or...
Or reducing our due diligence.
Is this just an honest way of doing it? Or is there a better way? We could inform people so that more people are...
Could we in the future add more wording to it?
I mean, to Leon's point, no one knows what this stuff is, and Brenda, I heard what you said, and I agree that, that yes, it's incumbent on citizens to look up whatever number, citation, and study it and say, okay, is this germane to me? But 98 out of 100 of us just aren't going to do that, and I think that we could, we could be putting our best foot forward as a city if we were more, more...
Transparent.
Yeah, more transparent.
Yeah, it is legal to do it this way, but as, can we in the future add some more wording to it?
Add some verbiage as far as the highlight, hey, talking about...
Yeah. I mean, I agree with you. I agree with you 100% with that, too, that, I don't think he's wrong. I mean, I don't think anybody's trying to do anything to pull over the wool over anybody's eyes or hide something.
I guarantee you that.
No, I don't think that in any way, shape, or form. I just think that, yeah, maybe in the future, that's what it... It's kind of like, you know, when certain boards come up with their meeting notes aren't clear enough, so in the future, can we make the meeting notes more clear? Yeah, we certainly could, and I think, you know, Chrissy did it as instructed for the legal way to do it, and let's add some more additional to it. I don't think you would have a problem with doing that, as long as instructed to do that.
And then my final question is, so if we were to consider that other option, what is, what's the discussion or the argument for and against having zoning R5 as it currently is, which protects three acres, and another zoning which allows acre and a half?
I don't technically have a, a problem with doing that, but we'd want to do, in order to do that, you'd need to vote this down.
Okay.
And express the willingness to have it brought back as a separate zoning.
Couldn't we table this for some more information for it?
Yeah.
But ultimately, what does it change?
Right.
The end result is the end result.
Well, I don't think it changes anything for, I don't know the people who brought this. You said two parties, and he mentioned Hack, and Kirk's got...
What's your name?
I'm Noah, and this is my sister Hallie. It was my parents, Stephen and Joanna Hall.
Okay, okay, Hall, sorry. So for them, you, that new zoning would allow them to do what they want to do, because we would zone it that way, but by keeping R5 as it is with three acres, you could also then in the future, zone portions of Hudson to be that. Instead of, so you could have R5, which is three acres, which I can tell you...
Residential's residential's residential. Yeah. A one, a two, a three, a four, a five.
And so it's different variations of, and I think, again, without having had a lot of discussion or thought about this ahead of time, I think one of the concerns that we would have is back to a little bit of the Twin Oaks thing, is just the nature of the neighborhood. If the back of that got developed, or what, you know, we would, we would like to see R5, three acre lots preserved, but in, I think there's a place for acre and a half lots in Hudson, too.
You're also already doing acre and a half lots right across the street from you, on the back of Twin Oaks, that are going to be right across the street from you.
Right, acre.
So, yeah, even smaller than that.
Right.
So I guess my concept on this is, what's the difference? Because if you want, you want a three acre lot, and it's all residential versus residential versus residential, so if you want three acres, buy two lots.
Right.
You know, which is going to be the same price.
Well, can it still just be one lot at three acres?
Not necessarily.
The minimum is one and a half acres, but it could be three, it could be five, right?
Depending on how they develop it.
So it would still be in R5. It would still have three acres.
With the minimum of an acre and a half.
With the minimum of the acre and a half.
Yeah. I don't see, we're splitting hairs here, because the end result is going to be the end result.
Except isn't the developer more interested in acre and a half lots than three acre lots?
Well, from a standpoint of cost, nobody's going to go in and develop a piece of property and put five acre lots or three acre lots.
Right.
With the ground value that it is, and the cost of, you know, putting water sewer in there, you just, you're not going to have it. So I understand you have three and five acre lots up there, but for Dahlstrom or you to go buy...
Fifty years ago, it meant that.
Go buy that ground now at current value and develop five acre lots, it's not going to happen.
And I, but, but what I'm saying is, does the city have an interest in certain areas? Is it happening?
And you still would, you still would have, you still would have the opportunity.
Well, and what it is...
It would still be there, because it, R5 is five, three, one and a half.
And probably when they developed the three acres, that was the minimum requirement by the county for the septic system.
Right.
And now we can go to one and a half, and so we don't have to, you know, we're not bound by that.
Can I ask Leon a question? Leon?
Yes, sir.
If, I understand as far as wishing there had been more communication on that, so...
Yeah.
If this had been set out, instead of being a revision to R5, had it come out as being an R5.5?
I don't care what the number is, it's something other than R5.
So it would have been specific that dealt with exactly, would not have changed what's allowed in an R5.
Yeah.
But you wanted it to be set out that, that we, the City Council has an ordinance that allows a one and a half acre lot under the specific frontages, rurages, all that type of stuff, you'd be okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So it is a splitting of hair.
But it also allows the city to maintain an R5 three acre lot and say, if we wanted to say...
But it still does here, even under the proposed revision.
Explain that to me.
Because would still allow an R5 exactly what it is, but says if you're less than three acres, you can't have the same number of animals.
Right.
And if you're, and you'd go down all the way to one and a half and still be in R5. So what it does, it sputs a little tier out there.
Right. But, but in a situation where any developer, like Scott just said, is going to only want to develop a large enough lot that is, meets people's demand, but as... but as small as possible, acre and a half, it gives the city a vehicle to protect from that kind of development in certain areas if we wanted to. So we've got certain developments, we could say, that are R5, three acre lots, and then we could have certain areas that could be developed with RXYZ, one and a half acre lots.
Coming from a city perspective, why wouldn't we want to have, I mean, not that we don't want, because the values could be higher, obviously, on a three acre lot, you know, but if they, you've got part of that too, that if you have five houses in a 15 acres versus nine houses on a 15 acres, you know, what's best city-wise too? But they do still have that opportunity to make them the bigger lots, because we're not gonna restrict them to just the size, it just has to be a minimum of this size. So if that developer wants to come in and build $6 million houses that are each on three acres, but the reality is, in this area, that's not happening that far and fewer and further between. But we also, yes, if you bought two, you could buy two lots and have your three acres protected, and nobody could do anything on your lot that you own. And yeah, you're gonna be taxed on two separate lots, but it's gonna be an undeveloped lot versus, you know, the city, obviously, we would like every single lot to be developed, but if you buy it, there's nothing we can do about it, you know, kinda the same way out here. But I think it, it just gives a minimum, but doesn't take away from that developer setting up the three acres in there too.
I understand, I understand.
And the possibility of somebody wanting three acres and wanting to buy two, one and a half acre lots is not practical. Value of a lot is based upon frontage.
Right.
It's not based upon depth. So you can go deep and get more ground, so that people can still do five acre lots, so they can do threes, they can do anything else, it's really the frontage. And if you're having to put in water and sewer from city, that's one thing. In that area that's out there where Kurt's at, where the Hocks are at, we don't have water and sewer. We don't have any current tent in Pointon all the way across. So from a city's perspective, it can add tax base, it could add kids, you know, all the type of stuff that we talk about.
I don't think anyone's against acre and a half lots.
So it's really a case of trying to get it down. Legal question. We have this ordinance construed the way it is, which is modification of the R540. I would presume there's no possible way of approving, approving the context of the change, but on the specification that we draw that zoning into a separate zoning name, are we able to accomplish that tonight?
Sure we could, yeah.
How would we do that? Because I move that.
Well, or you'd be, you'd be, first of all, there is a-
You'd be moving to amend, right, which question you may answer.
No, go ahead.
You'd be moving to amend the ordinance to indicate however you wanna change the verbiage of it. So if you wanna say, leave R5 as defined, but create a separate division titled R1.5, I don't know how, whatever you wanna call it, with the specifications previously outlined in the ordinance, that's what it would be.
I'm for that.
Because right now, it's, this is, this is proposed out of your P&amp;Z committee as this. It's just, it's a recommended, it's a recommended change that way. You don't have to, and you provided notice to the public that some changes are going to occur to that ordinance, you've had your full and fair discussion. So somebody would have to move to amend the ordinance as proposed to the terms that they wanna do, and then someone would have to second that, et cetera.
And Kate, in answer to your questions, there's no urgency to it, from my perspective. I don't think there's an urgency from it there. The disadvantage of amending the motion to bring that into context is it eliminates our ability to go out with a new setting of a public hearing with a little bit more additional narrative on the front side. Now, I'm not that concerned that that was an issue that was raised.
So are these lots that we're talking about, the R5s, that they wanna variance upon? They're currently R5s, correct?
No, they're A1s.
They're A1s, so they're gonna be asking for a zoning change anyway. Which that was my concern, I'm like, if they're in R5 already, and so then this allows them to do this, it would save the-
Just one step.
The step.
Yeah, an extra step, but, so that was my question, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, if it were me, I would say, can we table this back, have more discussion with planning and zoning, and see what our options are, or, you know, whatever the case may be.
I think-
And get their recommendation.
I think, I think planning and zoning has said there is a value and a need, and they don't see a specific reason not to have this variation. I don't believe that they would say, hey, bring it back to us, when you already know that you probably are willing to do it, provided we have a separate, clear distinction. I don't think there's a need to go through the whole circle. I think that, given their recommendation us, I don't have any problem with amending it. I don't have any problem with tabling it to say, bring it back as a separate zoning, if that's even allowed.
Well, I'm at least tangentially interested in the devil of the details, I guess. That it's not, it's not like somebody's just moving to amend an ordinance to say, you know, number two instead of number one. It's a little bit more complicated than that in terms of the bulk requirements, and making sure that the ordinance, that whatever the proposed amended amendment actually fits with what your intention is. That's at least giving me a little bit of-
Yeah, so if there's an amendment that says, recommend approval of the concept, but that be a specific, defined-
Separate district.
Created for that, then that would, if that passes, then we go back to the original motion, which is passes subject to the amendment, then in two weeks it would come back on the agenda for second, yeah, second reading, under the revised verbiage.
So then we don't lose any time.
And it would also allow people who have an objection to it to show up, but we would not effectively lose any timing on that standpoint. So, so do I hear a motion for amendment to this?
Yep, whatever, whatever you just said.
Do I hear a second to that?
To the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, and the amendment is going to-
The amendment is to take the context, but to-
Recompose the concept.
The concept, the concept. As was proposed in here, to have a zoning allowable for one and a half acres or more.
So instead of amending R5, you're adding another line on the grid.
Right, or whatever.
With a certain adjustment into the bulk requirements to have it clear and distinct.
Okay, now, so, here's, here's my next question. Just to make sure I'm clear on this. So we've got this A1 ground out there. So they would come back and ask for, I don't know, how many acres is that?
Resilient R4, whatever.
1.5?
5.5, for a one and a half acre lot.
Okay, so it's five acres that they're buying, for example, or 10 acres that they're buying.
Whatever they have.
Whatever that they have. So they want that 10 acres to be 5.5, whatever the case may be.
1.5 acres.
So, let me talk, please.
I'm asking.
That's what I'm getting to, so let me finish my thought first, please. So these would all be 1.5 minimum lots that they're requesting.
If, if that's what they're doing, yeah.
So basically, in my mind, the R5 will probably not ever get used again. If, if they do, it'll probably be in very, very minimum use.
But it's there. And it also would give us a different color on the zoning map. So it would be very clear, these are the one and a half acre septic system lots.
Okay. I will make, I will second Matt's opinion.
Further discussion?
Are we confusing our citizens, adding another layer of zoning?
No, it's not a layer, it's a, it's a step. We go from R1 to an R2, R3, we'll have to figure out the right thing, and maybe it's a R5.
But to a degree, you are adding another type of zoning in your existing zoning scheme. Is that going to add significant complexity? Maybe, maybe not, I don't know, but you've, you've, what they're contemplating leaves the existing R5 available, because-
Just a case.
Obviously, I'm not, I'm not, I'm gathering from the discussion, some people here in Hudson really like that R5 description, and what goes with it, and the aesthetics that are involved in it. And so it allows you to keep that, but now you've added another one that's the 1.5 that's under the exact same conditions that you already discussed that you like.
So to that point, what are, what are we actually accomplishing by creating a separate one and a half acre classification?
Not removing R5 from our zoning group.
What I think we're accomplishing, Scott, is that you're, you're keeping the R5 tool in the belt as a vehicle for, for development, if we wanna use it in the future.
But it would still be in the belt, correct? If we pass this today, just as it is.
Well, 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 but then you-
Not practically though.
The circle around and all that.
You have, the bare minimums under the R5 would still exist, so they'd have to abide by that, where if it, if you went to the 1.5, that couldn't be the bare minimum.
If you read through all the verbiage, the net bottom line would be exactly the same. The value of doing it as a separate zoning district is clarity that when somebody asks, what can I do, it's more specific, instead of saying, you can do this except for. I think it adds clarity that way. And also, when we have our zoning maps, it's all in different colors. If we have an R5 that may be or may not be, okay, now they're mixing the color. So if somebody comes in, and we wanna show them exactly what you can do where, maybe it helps.
So this part of, this part of the undeveloped country, or rural part of city limits, is, is one and a half acre minimum, and this part is three acre minimum. And plain and easy, and so you put the one and a halves where the one and a halves are, and you put the threes where the threes are.
Now, there's gonna be very minimal three acre, because not very many developers-
Well, the other thing that is allowed is somebody with an R5 can split it, and then one and a half plus.
Right.
Which, by having it as a separate zoning classification, it would allow us, instead of saying, you can have this because you're under these variances, we could actually rezone it, and it's just clear as a bell, or much clearer. I really think it's a good, good solution.
All right, I still-
I'm figuring out what to call it, is, I don't know if you're gonna call it R5.5, or 1.5 doesn't really fit, that's smaller than what the other ones are.
We'll figure out something on that. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Could you call it R-Hawk?
Roll call on the amendment.
All right, Reister?
Hi.
Wyatt?
Hi.
Uh, Sibell?
Aye, yes.
Buns?
Don't see a point.
Engel?
No.
Passage 401, now we have the amended motion on the table. So can I have a roll call on that?
Hold on, sorry. Engel?
Hi.
Buns?
Hi.
Sibell?
We're voting on what now?
We're voting on the amended, we're voting on the ordinance change with the amendment attached that says we gotta, it can go, but we gotta split it out into its own zoning classification.
All right, aye.
I'm really confused here. Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
5-0. Okay, now, we go to item B, discussion action to approve the first reading of ordinance 792 and ordinance amending the Hudson City Code 2017, Chapter 166, Development Ordinance, Establishment of Zoning Districts. Now, here would be my suggestion on this one. I would request that they get a motion to table this, so that when we come back for the next council meeting, we have the 165 with the new zoning ordinance laid out, that will also necessitate us to really lay out clearly the animal restrictions and the other stuff out of the bulk requirements, and it can come through as a package. So if I can have a motion to table that, and it's passed, what I'll also ask for is that the next meeting, if the 165 passes under the revised stuff, we'll have the package with the expectation of waiving the first reading and passing the second, so we can get it set up.
So 166 is just the animal bulk requirement?
Yeah.
That go along with-
I move that we table it.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Government at work.
Reister?
Aye.
Engel?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Sibell?
Aye.
Buns?
Aye.
5-0, anybody wants to leave, feel free to, stick around if you want to. Okay, item C, discussion action to approve Resolution 2350, resolution of the Hudson City Council to support the Greater Cedar Valley 2021, which was tabled at the January 22nd, 2018 council meeting. For any discussion of this, I would need somebody to move from the table.
I, I move that we remove from the table the approve, or the motion to approve and the second from the table on this resolution.
So do I need a, I need a second to removal of the table? All in favor, say aye on that?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, now-
Now it's up for action.
Yeah, is it, it's appropriate that we can have some discussion first, isn't it?
Yes.
Kate, can you bring us up to date for some of the discussions you had, as you were kinda pursuing, and I didn't get a chance to point blank some of the questions? You had more of a chance.
So I brought back some discussion with Jim Shafer, who is the representative that was here at our Task Force Economic Development Meeting.
Were they just all quiet out there?
Yeah, technically, we can't shut the door or something.
No.
Just leave it open, slide it open, it's unlocked.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say, as long as it's not.
That's okay. Thanks.
So the project that they're, the, the concept of the question that we were having was about double dipping into joining the Cedar Valley Alliance as a member, as the city. And truly, that's not the item that they were looking for with this dollar amount that they came back to us. We are a member along with the Hudson Chamber of Commerce, the Hudson, the city of Hudson is a member of the Hudson Chamber of Commerce, which is then a member of the Cedar Valley Chamber and Alliance. So that is already taken care of, we don't need to worry about that. What they're requesting is the, what is it called, the 3E, what, I don't remember what this is, the project is called.
2021 Project.
2021 Project Plan, is that what it's called? I just couldn't remember the exact word.
2021 Initiative.
So this, this initiative that they are doing, the Cedar Valley Alliance is doing this initiative, which is based around bringing and retaining qualified work staff or qualified employees into the Cedar Valley as a whole. So this initiative, they are coming to the city of Hudson and asking us to make a donation into their project, which is earmarked specifically for this initiative, which will include things like their magazine sites or pages that are gonna include pictures and articles about the surrounding communities, and what the city of Hudson has to offer to employers, like John Deere, like some of the bigger ones that are in the Cedar Valley, that for them to attract and retain workforce, they need cities like Hudson that people would want to move to. So there will be social media pushes, there will be published pushes, there will be meetings with, with different entities about that. But this money that they are coming to us as a city for is to specifically to help them with that initiative, and to include Hudson in their projects that go along with this workforce retention piece, and attracting qualified workforce from other areas to come to the Cedar Valley. Does that make a little more sense? It's not paying for-
Not double dipping a budget.
It's not paying for membership, it is our-
Which we already have.
Which we already have, so we are already a member of the Cedar Valley Alliance.
So it's kinda buying our way into the future media push.
Correct, so what this is, is us investing in their project, which will total workforce, you know, targeting, and include Hudson as one of the smaller communities that is a part of this, that we wanna join them in this.
So here's my question, is in this initiative, in this push, where they're gonna promote the Cedar Valley and all the Cedar Falls, Waterloo, and the smaller communities, or what the smaller communities have to offer, will we be left out of that if we don't join this? Or, I mean, in my mind, I'm thinking they're gonna have to cover Hudson, whether we give them money or not, right?
No.
No. Okay. Not in this initiative, because it's specifically focused towards that workforce and housing areas and stuff like that.
No, I would say if anybody's gonna do their own, their own research, they're gonna come up and find Hudson, obviously, if they're gonna Google the area, they're gonna find Hudson, yes, I agree with that. But I think this is more of a targeted, more of a focused approach, that we join, and we have a much bigger reach with this group than we would on our own, that unfortunately, we just don't have right now. And, and part of that is, you know, the reach that they already have, the employers that they work with, we don't reach out to those employers individually, not that we couldn't, it's a lot of work. They have the staff to do that, and this is our way of buying into part of that program to use their resources to help us as well.
The whole, the whole program was, they were going after 3 million, wasn't it? So we would be 3,000 out of 3 million, which is well under the per capita that we normally get assessed on some of these other things, like the emergency management, so probably one-third, third of that rate.
So on the pushes, is, is it possible for-
So on the pushes, is, is it possible for, just to make sure we're getting the bang for our buck, obviously, because, right, it's like a annual thing or what have you, is there a way for us to, how are we going to know that Hudson was named, or...
We will have representation in this initiative and in their future discussions. George and I have just talked about that recently. There will be a Hudson representative on some of their discussions and in their boards with them.
I was invited, they're having a special meeting, half day meeting for visionaries. I got personal invitation to that. And it says, don't pass it on to anybody else, personal invitation. I said, I can't go, I've got a conflict, that's my emergency management meeting.
And they said, pass it on to somebody else.
They passed back and said, if you've got somebody else you can send, do it. I talked to Kate tonight, she's willing to go. And as active as she's been in on the Cedar Valley, I think this helps give that little bit of a, a opening for us.
And I, I am very active with, with their, I mean, I am not a board member, I don't, I, I think, I love what they do, I love their concept, I love their reach. I think they've got a lot of young visionaries coming up through that. They are just getting a new CEO coming in too, well, they haven't hired him, their current one is just leaving. And I think that they are going to continue to excel and help economic development in the entire Cedar Valley region. And they know that not everybody, you know, they're trying to attract large companies, large businesses, large everything to come to this area, and they know not everybody wants to live in a, in a big city, not everybody wants to live in Waterloo, not everybody wants to live in Cedar Falls. A lot of people, you know, we've got huge things to offer in these more rural communities that we, we do have here, and Hudson is prime and poised to be a, a huge part of that. You know, with, with our schools, with our everything we've got here. Our proximity especially, absolutely, you know. Even, even a Janesville that's thirty five, forty minutes away compared to Hudson that's ten, is a huge difference to a lot of people, so...
And forty five from Target?
Okay, thirty minutes, twenty five, I don't know, twenty?
And I was, I was encouraged just in the fact that Cedar Valley Alliance actually reached out to the mayor of Hudson to say, hey, we want you included in this discussion too, with the change in executive management.
And I, I do think there's a lot to be said for, you know, I, there were, the Cedar Valley Alliance had a membership, had an event just this past Thursday evening in Cedar Falls. And every single, well, I kind of volunteered, I did it the one before that too. I asked their director that does some of these events, I'm like, hey, we need to get one of these, I want a business after hours in Hudson. And she said, all right, email me, and I said, we're going to have it at D and W at their new office. And I hadn't asked Cory, so I texted Cory afterwards, I said, hey, what did you, what would you think about ever having one of those? You know, like, I suppose we could do that, I said, good, because I already volunteered you. You know, because it's just the newest one that came to my head. But I, every single time that I'm at one of those, somebody on that board I talk to about, we need to get something in this town. We want Hudson, we want Hudson, we want, so they probably get sick of hearing me talk about it, and eventually they'll just start coming here, so.
Do we have a motion on the table right now?
No.
What was that?
Yeah.
It was just discussion.
Yeah.
The only motion...
The motion was to bring it back.
Yeah, there was a motion last meeting to...
Oh, okay, okay.
So we had the motion to bring it back.
I still have to have a motion to approve.
I don't know where everyone else is at, but I assume this is going to pass. And so I'm going to vote no, and I want the no vote, I want, I want the no vote to be taken back to them to say, hey, the reason that we didn't have to give you the ayes vote is because we're not sure that you're going to give us Hudson, that give Hudson the, the...
The press coverage we want.
That, that we want. And so approve the, the no councilman wrong by hooking us up big time. So there's all my cards on the table.
So do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty three fifty to support?
We already had that motion.
No, we haven't.
No, we didn't.
Yeah.
All we had was the motion off the table.
No, well, but, and it was removed, the motion and the second that was made at the last meeting.
All you could do was remove the motion, she had to have the second in order to remove the tabling. And I confirmed with, with our attorney, the fact, can we have a discussion before we have a motion to approve this?
Right, so just a discussion, I don't think you had a second.
We, according to the minutes, we did.
You had a second?
Oh, so you're saying that, that your motion brought it back intact?
That's what I, yeah, that's what we moved, was to table the motion that had been made and seconded.
But I think from Robert's Rules of Orders, it takes a motion to pull it off the table, and then it would take a motion to...
And we did, we just did that.
But I'm saying, I need a motion to approve.
No, because, let's take a look what the minutes saved us.
I don't disagree with you, Gail, but maybe just to be clear, we might as well do it again. What's the downside? What's the downside to bootstrapping it? You already had one motion and a second, what's the downside to having somebody else's motion and second again? You know what I mean? Now, because you have new discussion.
And I understand, I'm just, yeah.
Because you've had new discussion now, so in theory, there's...
I'm taking back fifty years to my four H days.
And I don't necessarily know, but at this point, I don't see the downside to somebody making another motion.
It won't screw it.
We're double motioning.
Would you want to move on resolution?
No, that's okay, I'm going to let someone else do it, because I'm following my...
Well, we know Matt's not going to do it.
You know, Matt might make the motion, he's just going to say no to it, if anyone takes it.
I'm going, I'm going. We have a motion.
I'll, I'll second Matt's motion that we do approve that.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Wait, he can't make a motion to pass it and then vote no.
Sure, sure he can, yeah.
Can I?
Because you can change your mind during discussion, it's already occurred.
We already had discussion.
Discussion, okay, now we've had more discussion.
Yeah. All right, I'm pretty sure I can.
Okay, I'll move to approve it, and then Matt won't have to worry about it.
And then I'll second Brenda's motion.
Holy crap.
Citizens are loving her with the triangle.
Oh, Lord.
Hi, Triangle. Okay, roll call.
Engel?
Hi.
Wyatt?
Hi.
Estabelle?
Hi.
Buns?
Hi.
Reister?
Four one. Okay, where are we? Item D, discussion action to approve resolution two three five one, a resolution to pay Hudson Municipal Electric Utilities a share of the insurance dividend from Blackhawk Insurance Services for April one, twenty sixteen, to March thirty first, twenty seventeen, in the amount of two thirteen eighty two. So move. Discussion. Roll call.
Reister?
Hi.
Estabelle?
Hi.
Buns?
Hi.
Engel?
Hi.
Wyatt?
Hi.
Five zero. Item E, discussion action to approve resolution two three five two, a resolution for approval of the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty one Police Department Union Contract with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters for the city of Hudson, Iowa.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm assuming that contract was all reviewed and boilerplate stuff?
Eight percent, and eight percent, and eight percent, that's what they asked for.
And ten percent, and three and three is a better deal?
It's sixteen compared to twenty four.
Yeah.
It's a third better.
Wait, are you referring about your police contract? I never saw that.
It, it's a boiler, it's the same as the prior one.
I'm not arguing, I just don't want, I just don't want the council to think that I've provided any legal advice on that, because I have not.
From my analysis of surrounding, we had two officers leave. They said part of that reason was, was wages. And we've reviewed surrounding communities, and in my analysis and opinion and concurrence from the personnel committee, was we're quite a ways underpaid. And this is basically to get that starting point up, and then back into that three percent scenario.
And this is just union officers?
This is just union, this is not the old, the chief of police's compensation.
He's the only one that's not union.
Correct.
Correct.
Well, and you're part time.
Right, and our part time officer.
But the part timers also come under the union as far as the wage scale. As an example for you, independents. Independents is a starting wage, twenty six oh eight. Ours, after this change, comes up to twenty point two two. And that's ran it throughout it. Further discussion? Roll call.
Wyatt?
Hi.
Buns?
Hi.
Estabelle?
Hi.
Engel?
Hi.
Reister?
Five zero. Item F, discussion action to approve resolution two three five three, a resolution for approval of the city council procedural rules of the city council of the city of Hudson, Iowa. And the only change, correct me if I'm wrong, Chrissy, is that instead of an absence on the council being an automatic no, it is simply a non-person. So if there were four people here and one person vacant, and you had a full unanimous vote of yes, it'd be four zero. It would no longer be a four one.
Except in the case of abstention because of, there's a difference between...
Of conflict, yes.
There's a difference between abstention, of conflict, and an abstention of, I just don't want to vote on it. Because if I don't want to vote on it, then it's a no. If it's a conflict, then it's a, you, you don't count as a person.
It is still a four zero then?
Right.
Yeah, if you're, if you're abstaining because of conflict of interest.
And it would be, it would mention that someone abstained.
Yes.
Yeah, and I always do.
I have a lot of people ask me why that one person keeps voting no all night long.
That'd be me, every May, when I'm coaching softball, everybody's like, why do you vote no all the time? I'm like, I don't, I'm not there.
Yeah, Mark Peavers voted no for an entire year, and nobody could figure out why he won the grade with anybody.